She said she did.
It was like starting to get so bad.
Oh, no.
I just feel like you didn't even talk to her.
Yeah.
No more tech, no more time for the food, um.
I forget.
It's like, it's just so sad.
A lot of people go.
You were there. I'm trying to remember who sent my email, so now I can.
It's his first time really playing. He was just so fucking, and you know, just not, he's, he's advanced, he's not as poor. He's not like that again, but he's all, she'd be here to just be a person that, how about it?
Oh, sure.
She's kids.
I know, I know the name, but I got, I think it was.
Yeah. She's got.
If you don't do it now.
She's still like that. It's fun to see the organization.
Yeah, he'll be excited that, did you find this test? Yeah.
For him to be able to draw.
Yeah. He goes, I don't remember. Well, if you don't put your name on it, what do you?
But he just was. This is one of those.
At Craig's, I took him there. Wow. Oh, I'm so excited to have.
I know, that's, that's quality control.
Now, we've got a right seven, the show at the high school, right? Everybody's like, well, that looks fun, so now the one act play, said I got like seventy kids that are interested.
Wow.
We're gonna have the cut actor.
Hi, Brian.
A people.
Welcome.
Don't close, Tom.
Do you want to speak? Are you speaking?
I would.
Okay, we'll write your name down.
They have you sign on later.
We'll sign, we'll sign you up. It is six o'clock. Here we go. All the meeting org please rise for the pledge. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. All right, also gonna read our mission statement and partnership with the communities, the mission of the Dorfland and Feld School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect that is so they become self-directed, responsible lifelong owners. All right, uh, board members, uh, Brittany Keel is absent this evening, um, she let us know earlier, and Laura is on her way, maybe a few minutes late, so we'll hold a document when she gets here. Also present, uh, Superintendent Hunstead. And visitors, so welcome all. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Nope, just a few things on my report, so.
Okay, so no action items?
There are none.
All right, do we have a motion?
Some.
Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, rebel recognition, are you gonna speak, Brian? Nope, okay. We're gonna, rebel recognition, we have so much fun stuff happening, our boys' football team going to the championship, super exciting.
Beautiful, yep.
Beautiful, so, so, super exciting. And then, um, David, uh, the, has to tell us a little clue, the play was a big success, they had three performances?
Three performances, and, I mean, you know, probably as many people as we've ever seen in, uh, plays in the last five, six years, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, it was really well attended, the kids dipped just fantastic, and I think we all had fun, so. But related to me, not after memorized lines, I think.
Oh.
At least that's what my kids told me.
That's what they're saying.
Actually, I'll, I'll segue off of that a little bit, it was actually, they had four, because they did perform for the high school too, the night twelve on Friday afternoon, which, uh, they said the kids were the most nervous about, because of course they gotta perform in front of their peers, but, uh, that's when I attended, and it went, it was just fantastic, it was just really fun to see. One thing he said is, he's nervous now because of the one act play, now that all the kids saw it, he's nervous about the one act play, he's gonna have about seventy kids that wanna be in it, and he's, he said, I've never had to cut before, and I'm getting nervous, he went, I can't have you all in there, so. Well, that's a tip to Andrew Millman, uh, you know, I think he's just done a really fine job with, he's put in a ton of work, um, into the whole program, and kudos to him. Yeah, agreed. Continued success.
Awesome. Anything else? Football wise?
Nope, just kudos to the football team, that's awesome.
I'm so excited.
Yes.
So, I'm so, I'm so pinching myself. This is, it's gonna be fun.
It's good stuff.
All right, so, six point one, board committee reports, uh, Nicole sent out a nice email, thank you for that, do you wanna recap that?
Yeah, we had a, um, intergovernmental meeting, and, uh, we're just getting ready for the IGR retreat, uh, we have secured speakers, Derek Lapointe, uh, Shannon Foul, and Sherry Larson are gonna be speaking, we've got a couple dates, um, set for the backup just in case, so we're looking at January twenty seventh, um, and getting a lot of great feedback about, um, different groups joining us and, um, being more inclusive, getting some of the smaller towns, um, to find representation, so that was really exciting. And then we also had a community ed meeting, talked a lot about, uh, third through eight, basketball, um, there was some question with scheduling, uh, just due to the football team going, and not sure how many kids were gonna make it to the games, and we didn't wanna like have kids that didn't have a full team to play, so they waited a little bit to get a survey from the parents, um, but we have a lot of other stuff coming up, um, the Winter Blast Tournament, uh, snowmobile safety's starting pretty soon, the daddy-daughter holiday ball's coming up, um, we have open gym, the first open gym that was the, uh, Sunday before meeting was very, um, low attendance, which we thought was kind of odd, because normally that's, um, a little bit busier, but, um, she expected that to pick up as well. They have a mother-son game night coming up for the same, um, pool for the, the, uh, daddy-daughter, um, it's gonna be a game night, uh, very casual, K through five, um, winter session for dry reset is going through, and she's already looking forward to, uh, junior, um, JO volleyball and some of the other volleyball programs, so it's just rocking through the end of the year, it's gonna just be one program after the next for community ed, so, pretty, pretty busy stuff.
Is that retreat still open to townships?
It is.
Do you have to pre-register that too?
Um, I don't believe there's a pre-registration, but I can send you the information on it, and then you can, uh, definitely.
I would like to do it, I know that.
Yeah, they, they would, they're trying to reach out to all the townships.
Yeah, yours is going, I haven't gone there for a while, no, but.
There were, there are two that have, um, confirmed that they're coming, and I. We wish townships, but there are.
Would they are, I'm sure, but you got a meeting here in early December, so.
Perfect.
Yep.
I'll send you the info.
Yep, they would love for more townships and more small towns to be represented, for sure. Last year's retreat was my first, so it was very well attended, and it was nice to see the smaller communities be recognized or at least have a voice, so.
Any questions on those?
So, uh, Shannon and I attended, uh, DGF Activities Council meeting, um, it was supposed to be on the tenth, but that could be moved because of the two hour waits, um, great news, we had two of our, uh, students there, we had Max Baumgartner and Scott Stotler, the seniors, and then, uh, we did have a few, you were in the building, Tommy Costello came as a representative of the community, and then Hannah, Hannah Lindberg.
Yep.
Um, so that was good, I think the biggest thing, uh, that was discussed for a long time is facility use, still some questions on our policy, um, nine oh.
Nine oh five five.
Nine oh five five.
Yep.
So, I had Katie email you that are in the policy group, um, so you guys can review, review that, and Shannon has the, uh, questions up front forward, uh, we also discussed the gym plaques and banners, uh, Katie had some really nice, um, options that she showed us, we came, we came to the conclusion though that we should invite some vendors in to come and actually physically see our space, tell us what they can do, what can we, what, what can we expect, you know, we want uniformity, we want everything to look clean and concise, we talked about building some trophy cases, um, over by the theater and over here, but you wanted to have the shop kids do it as a project, right?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I think Katie.
You wanna jump in on that?
Yep, Katie was gonna go to the, uh, the coaches, and we're talking about how much space, so is it a six foot high trophy case, you get three by six, you get six by six, you get whatever, right? So each team will get so much space, so that way, let's say it's, uh, individual sports, golf, yes, it's a team event, but there's a lot of, or oftentimes it recognizes individuals, so they can have a team pitcher, you know, some, some sports, it's easier to get trophies than others, sometimes when you have a great team like our football team this year, they're gonna end up with a bunch of trophies, it's like, okay, where do you put last year's trophies? Where do you put, you know, you can get ten trophies in two years, depending on conference, subsection, section, state, so this is kind of that discussion, right, so we'll have some space, we thought, at our fire, our fire department, that's, I mean, our shop and industrial tech can build some things, and with that measurement in mind, knowing that each sport then can have some kind of representation in it.
Yeah.
Whether it's just a photo of the team, whether it's, right?
I think everybody in the room was, you know, we, we wanna celebrate our history.
Yes.
So we can't put up every trophy from one season, you know, just using the football team, we're, we're gonna have a championship trophy there we'll play in, we wanna display that, but, you know, the district's gonna look a little bit smaller than the, than the big ones.
It, it is, so.
We'll see, um, anyways, good discussion.
Yeah, very good.
Uh, I had to leave because I had a patient, but team meal, can you fill us in on what was this, I'm looking at the meeting minutes, just beginning this winter season, we're gonna feed the kids that come from over an hour away.
Right, so we talked about how many events is that, so let's say it's Pequot Lakes comes here to play girls' basketball, they're over an hour away, game's over, we're gonna feed them and our team, we're gonna feed them barbecues, chips, and water, we're gonna say, hey, thanks for coming, you got a long way home, here's a meal, they'll know that before they come, so their families, their parents, the team can plan, hey, we don't need to stop, we don't need to bring stuff, because we're gonna get fit before we leave, um, um, that's where it's at right now, we're, we're just gonna do it, we're gonna order the stuff through the kitchen because we can, we're just gonna, and then what we're gonna do, or at least the discussion is, let's talk to those parents of those players, because you know that most of them are gonna be here, so, girls' basketball parents, in that example of Pequot coming here for a girls' basketball game, girls' parents, can you help serve it? Just set it out here, we'll have tables that can hang out here, if you need to wheel down some tables from the cafeteria, just to fill this area after the game, we want our kids to have a meal with their kids, and after a while, if it's, okay, it's forty-five minutes, it's half hour away, do we feed everybody? I don't know, what's that look like? We just wanna make sure that their experience when they come here is different, or appreciated, or they leave here and don't, we should do that too, because wouldn't it be nice for our kids to go somewhere and get a meal after a game? If we could start doing that, I think it's an easy thing to do, why? Because I've seen it happen, it's where, what we did in Millager, um, and we did it for every football game, we started to spill out into volleyball games, and if it's anybody that had traveled a long way, we always made sure they got fed. It's, it's just a way to serve our, the people around us, and I think it's just a, a nice thing, yeah, so, anyway.
Laura, David, any committee reports?
No.
No. So, Brittany wasn't able to be here, but Wellness Matt, and, um, I don't know if you got this, did you get any of this?
No, I did not.
So, uh, there is a need, or actually, the, the wellness group wants to organize a mobile dental clinic for elementary students, so she's gonna be, um, this Jane Newbauer's gonna be sending, um, out an email to you and the principals to see if that's something that we can do for elementary families, so anyone can take advantage of the mobile clinic, it says, but the target students are those that have medical assistance and are free to receive meals, since many of those, uh, dental offices are not accepting those families, so, anyway, I was supposed to mention that?
Yeah.
She'll be getting an email.
Yeah, and I believe we did something on it last year, I know there was some discussion on it, I can.
Okay.
I thought we've done it through the health office, like, the nurse has a P A S O for, because I know I felt with that important, right?
Oh, okay.
No, it's communal service for the students.
We did it in Newland last year too, and it was, um, really neat to see how they just quickly set up this whole little office in a classroom, and serves several kids and families, and it was just remarkable how fast and efficient they did it.
They're all.
And mentioned us working in a trailer city park, parking lot.
All right, sounds like we're on to six point two superintendent report.
All right, uh, I was at the MRA conference at Craig's, uh, got to spend some time with my daughters at night, so it works out nice, um, but, uh, just a real good conference, I would say it's, it's a conference, uh, for board members to think about attending to, there's quite a few board members there, just because MRA obviously represents rural education in Minnesota, and, uh, a lot on leadership, they had a lot on property taxes, uh, went to one, that PMA Steve Pumper, who was, uh, we have a contract with PMA, uh, did a nice presentation on, on taxes and property taxes, and how it's impacting school districts and, and actually the whole state, because they, uh, I haven't noticed it here as much, the state average is up twenty percent, he said it's the first time in like fifty years that the state is seeing this kind of an increase in property taxes, um, property taxes, he said, uh, so, his presentation's over, and I'm getting him, he's gonna share his slideshow with me, I asked him today to share that with me, um, so I went up after, I said, hey, Steve, so what's the number one reason why that's happening? And he, his analogy was, uh, that, or his interpretation was that the cities has lost so much of a population, and they're all trying to get out, and they're buying up, and I, I'm kind of an example of that, when I was coming down to try to find a place, every time I came down, most of those places were already sold before I got down here, and it was all metro people buying them, just bing, 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 and spending one hundred to two hundred thousand dollars more, because they're selling a home for five hundred, seven hundred thousand, they're buying something up here that typically would maybe be two hundred, three hundred, they're buying them for four and five hundred thousand. So, the market values were skewed significantly, because it's all based on market value, and market values were going through the roof, and so he said, I, I wanna say, and I don't have, you know, obviously the slideshow or anything, but I wanna say the average was like twenty percent, uh, I think Morehead, according to Marcus, is one up eight percent, Morehead, now out here, because we have residential growth out here, Dilworth has have some housing development, obviously, Lynn has some here too, our, our residents, or I'm sorry, our people units are pretty stable, and we didn't see quite that influx, Lakes area was significantly impacted, uh, Brainerd Lakes area was impacted, why? Because people leaving the cities wanted to get on those types of property rate, so, yeah, just really make you kind of step back and go, wow, it, it was significantly different, and, uh, anyway, we don't have any operating referendums, but those districts that did, uh, the districts saw a big windfall of cash, but their truth on taxation meeting might be interesting, because the people are paying way more in taxes than they're, what's going on? Well, when you pass the referendum, you weren't projecting a twenty percent property tax increase on average, so when you were sharing your tax impacts to community members, when you're trying to pass an operating referendum, or a capital project levy, or whatever, you couldn't project that, because he said it's, it hasn't happened in fifty years, and now it happened, and everybody's going, what is happening here, and now they're coming after the district, well, the district didn't make that decision, they didn't have an impact on the market value of home, um, and this is residential now, we're not talking commercial properties, this is a residential property tax increase, so, yeah.
The only one I opened was my college one, and that was four point nine percent.
Increase?
Yeah.
It did go up for you, okay, how about you two?
Something close to that, five point six.
Yeah, mine was up some, uh, talking to brokers, was down a touch, so I don't know the impact for you guys either, but did you guys see a big spike?
Seven.
Seven, so it's still pretty substantial. Yeah, state average though was, yeah, much worse than that, so.
I did look at egg land.
Uh, yeah, no, good news, good news, egg was pretty sick, for, yeah, you know, we always gotta take care of the farmer, right? Anyway, but it was, it was residential homes that was what was, uh, being discussed, I guess, so, anyway, just a lot of good information, you kind of makes you step back and pause, and again, if it's something you wanna attend in the future, uh, there was a fair amount of board members there, which, yeah, it's good information, so that was good.
I have a question, really, I'm sorry if we've discussed this, I don't think we've touched on it for a while, but, um, to see if the tax equalization between Morgan and Dilworth is getting more even, so anytime that it evens out, then we get to acquire more.
Dilworth.
Right, so it's set up to be automatic when it meets that threshold, so it's a good point, I, I haven't checked on it.
No, right, and I, I think it's been quite some time since we've even visited that conference.
I feel like it's been a few years before we've had a transfer done.
Um, we haven't since.
It's been a while.
I don't think it was Brian's last year, I think it was the year before that, wasn't it?
It'll be, it's not transferred, it's Brian's last year.
You think on Brian's?
Yeah, because we've had quite a few sections, wasn't it like one or two?
Yeah, I think you're right, that last week, it was kind of built on the tape that last.
Okay, yeah, I'd be curious to see.
Yeah, that's a Tony question I can ask.
Okay, it's your question.
Yeah, it was, yeah, I, I can't remember the threshold, is it like a plus or minus three percent, or something like that, uh, I remember reading it when I first got here, so I'd have to look that, but, yeah, um, anyway, Veterans Day program, I wanna touch base on that really quick, but just a super, uh, big thank you to Wayne and Brittany for all their work on it, Mr. Lepard and, and Ms. Young, um, also to Mr. Reynolds for speaking, did a nice job, I was at the conference, so I, if it would've been held Friday, I would've been there, but I, and of course, the conference happens when it was, Nicole, were you there?
I was there, and it was remarkable, it was fabulous, so many veterans attended, and it was, and I heard great feedback from the, um, deputies who went, um, that were veterans, just how touching and moving, it was just a really great day. Hearing all those little voices sing that song, it just, I was crying, so.
My dad was there as a vet, and he loved every minute of it.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, it's gonna be an annual thing, and, uh, yeah, it's, I think it's long overdue, and I'm glad they were able to do it, and.
I think the kids liked it.
I think the kids, the high school kids that came over and sang, that was a big deal, um, he had two hundred seats, uh, we got two hundred chairs for the floor, so these chairs don't mark the floor, brand new floor, like, yeah, here we go, but, perfect, he said, uh, we're gonna have to get more chairs next year, because they were full, and he said that people had to sit into the bleachers with the kids, so, which is awesome, now we hope, let's get some more chairs on the floor, and so.
For the first time having it, that's a great turnout.
Yeah, and the building is semi-open over there. Thank you to the state for allowing us to have occupancy for that, and so, that worked out great. Uh, construction update, uh, we are getting closer, uh, to be, uh, I have a OEC meeting Wednesday, um, met with Ryan Kirby, the state inspector, today over there, uh, we're shooting for Monday, so a week from today, for our fire kids to get into the gym, they still gotta go through the back room, but let's get them in there, uh, and then we're gonna start talking about, can we start having practice, uh, for junior basketball in there, can we host a game, the game is probably gonna be tough to get pulled off, he's not too excited about letting us do that, they have a game over there today, we'll use the old gym there, the loco, I believe it is, yep, depo, nope, the depo.
The local.
The locals, yeah.
The local, I just came from a game there.
Oh, you did, okay, so you were there, yeah.
Yeah, uh, the scoreboard isn't working. Yeah, Katie, Katie was clocking, and they had whiteboards, so hopefully they can figure out what switch, cut, or something, line.
The scoreboard wasn't on, did it work?
No. So you can ask them what that I'm saying.
I'll, I'll be on that tomorrow morning.
Good news.
Yeah.
It's always good news.
Um, what else? Um, again, we're punch listing over here, we got a few things, I just walked the building here this afternoon, uh, we have a few things in the fax room that are done, uh, there's an oven for the handicap area, and then the sink for the handicap kitchen, they put in the wrong cabinet, so they can't get a wheelchair underneath, we have the cabinet to replace it, so that's gotta get switched out, so again, just punch listing, same with these blinds, I'm not gonna get into that right now, because we wanna make sure that we stay positive. Anyway, so we're working through that, I would say the Dilworth site, uh, I, I'm just gonna say we're moving in after the new year, that's kind of where I'm at, it's, it says early December, anyway, that's, that's that, I'll just leave it at that, um, the last thing I wanna talk about that wasn't on here on the agenda was the district leadership team, so I sent letters out last week to some parents, uh, from elementary, from the middle school, high school, because we need representation from all three of those, uh, schools, I also visited with the juniors today, I had four juniors I met with this morning to, to serve on it, um, I told them they all have to get back to me by December ninth, because I'd like to have that in place before Christmas, and I would like to have our first meeting at the district leadership team in January, I haven't set the time or the date yet, because I wanna find out who can come and what that's gonna look like, is it a morning meeting, is it an evening meeting, uh, I told the high school students, the juniors today, that, um, it most likely will be morning, because when you start talking about teachers, and you start, start talking about community members, they gotta get to work, so it might be a seven o'clock meeting, it'll run no later than eight, and some people get to work, or they need to leave early, or whatever, but we'll work that out, I guess, once we know who's gonna be on the committee, and, uh, so, no, that's getting started, so, they'll be a big part of advising and giving input towards our strategic plan, as we work through that process, they're in January, uh, they'll have a voice, they're not gonna have a vote, they know that, this is an advisory group, but to get more input is gonna just be beneficial, so, that's that, questions for me, anybody?
Side question, how's the school with the new service director?
Yeah, fantastic, I should've, I, in fact, I told Brooke that, I said I should probably talk about Shannon, uh, real good, tonight we have a personnel meeting after the board meeting, and we're gonna talk a little bit about personnel, that she has saved us, uh, two positions already, just in a revamp and a revaluation of how she does things, and we haven't, it hurt anybody, nobody's been let go, so don't, I don't want that to get out there, but just made it more efficient, so we don't need to hire some people, that we were always worried about, we're short, we're short, and this is what I kept getting, she's, nope, she's, uh, very good, she also worked through a combi ovens snafu with the state and a grant, that went from Chelsea to Eric, to Brooke Malka, for, and then now to Shannon running it, um, so we saved thirty thousand dollars on a combi oven situation that we didn't need either, that was run through the construction, long story short, uh, the grant wasn't coming through, and so because of that, we worked it out where we can get rid of it, so, yeah, great question, thanks for asking, she is, uh, I meet with her every two weeks, have a meeting with her on Wednesday, so, yep. Been good, anything else?
All right, thank you, Shannon.
Yep.
Uh, purple meeting minutes, the seven point one, this is our November seventh meeting, do we have a motion?
Sorry.
Motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by Laura, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven point two, special meeting, November fourteenth, do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So.
Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And set agenda, uh, claims and accounts for. Also included in your packet is the treasurer's monthly budget report, uh, perming the donation from the Rebel Fishing Club in the amount of two hundred dollars for locker one signage, per the donation from Angie Woodson in the amount of hundred dollars for robotics, per the donation from the Touchdown Club in the amount of four hundred dollars to be used for turf field use for state at Fargo South High, per the donation from Pender Transportation, the amount of three hundred dollars to be used for the football student activity account, per the donation from Shields in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars to be used for DGF flunch program. Do we have a motion?
So.
Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David, any questions or discussion?
The.
They have turf, so the football players have been practicing, they practiced at Morehead for one week, and then Fargo South for another week, because, to get used to the game of turf versus.
Did that work out to use the Concordia indoor one?
Uh, they're talking about that, nothing, I just talked to Tony here before I came to the meeting tonight, uh, they don't have anything finalized yet, um, the Fargo dome's out, because if you guys know, they're filling the dome with, uh, non-perishable, the food bank, or whatever, so that's happening, so that's out this week, they are gonna use Morehead's outside turf, I think, on Wednesday, because it's, it's supposed to be nicer too this week, so they're gonna do that, um, they're still working, Concordia was another one they were looking at, uh, it's a tartan floor, but at least it can be inside and do run through things, so, he said they don't have it all finalized yet, they're working on that, so, yeah, one thing I wanted to point out, uh, I was visiting with Ronnie here before the meeting too, if you look at our budget sheet, uh, in your packet, when we, uh, when I came here, we set up the budget sheet to show you Fund One, uh, it had the student activity, it had the food service, so Fund Two, it had Fund Two, it had Fund Four, Community Ed, uh, yeah, Community Ed, and what happened there, and let's say you and I visited during the week here a little bit, so if you look at it now, the cover sheet just says Fund One, so those percentages, when you start looking at the percentage at the bottom, and then where we should be monthly as far as percentage wise with the budget, this is a direct correlation, what happens sometimes with fund, with the activities account fund in there, is it would skew it, it would skew your percentages, right? Same thing with food service a year ago, food service was being paid for from the government still, you didn't have to, residents didn't have to pay for their lunches, so that number was inflated, uh, and you'll see this when we do our audit in December, when that report comes out, um, and so that skews the percentage, and then we have Community Ed, which that number didn't skew it much, but it does, it has effect on it, and I didn't wanna have that, that smoke and beer, so to speak, I don't want surprises, so Marcus and I have been talking daily, recently, about how this thing's. and I have been talking daily recently about how this needs to look. So now you'll see this on the front, it's just, this is Fund 1, which is our big budget, right? You flip it over, or you guys got a second page maybe? You got a, did you get a second page? Yeah, so this is now showing you Food Service Fund 2, you can see that as its own, you can see Community Ed, Fund 4, as it sits. If you'll notice, the next one is Debt Service Fund 7, and this is the fund that was not represented on our budget sheet in the past, we didn't have this on here. Well, you guys know that we have some debt, because we have some building projects since 2010, or actually before then. 2010, we're still paying on that. We had a major payment for that this year, in the excess of 1.2 million total, two payments, one of 800 and one of, you showed a 500. Well, that was inflating and the budget showed an inflated rate on our revenue, because that money was getting put in our general fund. Well, wait a second, that's gotta go to this payment, because we levy the people to pay for a bond, that money's in and out, so that should be in Fund 7, and I said, we have to show that here. That's why now you'll see that on your monthly board report, you'll see what's coming in, what's going out, what we've received and whatnot. And then last one on there is the student activity account. So all those different accounts are different funds by the state and us, you can see as a separate line item, so it doesn't skew that percentage. Am I making sense to you guys? Yeah, I just wanna make sure you always see it and this is, Marcus and I have had an opportunity to visit quite a bit about our audit and what's missing. This is the transparency that our community and our residents need to see if they ever need to see it. Without Fund 7 in there, that was 1.2 million dollars that was hidden, so to speak. I guess I'd say it that way, and I don't want it hidden, it needs to be out front because it affected our audit this year, which we'll talk about in December, okay? I just wanna make sure you understand that's formed, or the sheet, is budget sheet, because it changed, so.
One quick question on the bills, what's that, what do they, the ICS?
Oh, ICS, that's our commissioning. Remember, we had to get the commissioning for the end of this project for the state?
Okay.
And that's run through ICS, yep.
This wasn't coming there?
Nope, that's, that's a good question, because I sort of, myself, and that's what it is.
Just a question on the process, you know, the $400 to the base of the turf, that's where a question comes to school first and then, or, I'm just curious, is, was just not in the budget or?
You know, I'm gonna be honest with you, I didn't know that there was gonna be anybody donating to that, I thought we'd be paying for it. That was my assumption, when they came with the numbers, I said, that's part of this process, you have to give kids an opportunity to practice in a like facility, so we had a plan to pay for it. I guess I'd never had any other communication.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
That was, you know, how that worked. And then the $300 for the student activity account, but.
Yeah. Could you share on that?
For the football, yeah, for the football, towards a team meal.
Oh. Oh, yeah, it's on the bottom there.
On their, on their sheet? So there was a team meal?
Yeah, the student activity, it's used for the team meal on 11, 12, 22.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions?
David, did that answer your question? Yes, perfect, okay.
All right, so we have a motion by Nicole, second by David, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next board meeting is Monday, December 12th, this will be our only meeting in December, we'll be meeting at 6:00, followed by Facility Transportation Committee meeting, unless you're betting on it.
No, no, but I just want everybody to know, especially the public, that's our truth and taxation meeting.
Oh, yeah, are we doing the truth and taxation, we have to do it during the board meeting?
Yes, we can, so that'll be scheduled during the board meeting, the other thing is, it's gonna be our audit report, because the audit was gonna be next week when we are originally scheduled, they could not get it done for tonight's meeting, so it's also gonna be, so we're gonna have our audit and our truth and taxation.
And world's best workforce. And what?
World's, yes, world's best workforce report as well, so that has to be done by the 15th of December for the state, and we met with the admin team this week, they're gonna work on that and that'll be their report as well. So tonight, nice and short, maybe not so much in December.
Can we put up, I don't know where you put signs, but if you look at the truth and taxation statement, or as I say, it's gonna be in the, in the media center.
Oh, is that what it said? Okay, that's what we had it in the past.
Yeah, so I don't know what that is, or if we could put it on the webpage or something or others, or where it is.
Do you wanna just make a note of that to make sure we get that up?
Also, there's board members, there's board sheets, this is for Lakes Country Service Department, there's four people up for the election for that, there's a candidate resume here, before you leave it, where you can vote.
Thank you, I also have one from Region 1, if anybody wants to serve on that board, here you go, here's your opportunity.
Okay.
So if anybody wants to see me after, here's some information.
Ronnie's gonna be done, so he needs something else to. Okay, well, anything else, team? All right, 6:34, meeting's over. Nicole, you wanna shut that up?
Yep, there, thank you.
Hi, Roll.
Hi.
Welcome.